...
Meeting. Do I hear a motion to reconvene in open session from my colleagues?
I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Barlow to reconvene. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The Shenandoah County School Board hereby certified by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open session requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting will heard, discussed, or considered by the Shenandoah County School Board. Each member responds ISO certified when called by the clerk.
Ms. Walsh?
ISO certify.
Mr. Gushall?
ISO certify.
Mr. Barlow?
ISO certify.
Ms. Rutz?
ISO certify.
Mr. Helsley?
ISO certified. For the invocation tonight, we, it's been a very difficult couple of weeks for retirees and members of our staff. And I like to put up the names on the screen to have a moment of silence before Mr. Byers will have the invocation. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Mr. Byers led the memorial service for Donna Babcock yesterday. And he did an excellent job as well as everyone else that participated. So, George, would you give the invitation, please?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for the opportunity to be together. We thank you, Father, for especially those individuals whose names just appeared on the screen that represent lives of service to you, to their students, to their community, to this nation. Father, we thank you for them, and we thank you for their labors. We thank you for their dedication. We thank you, Lord, for the many lessons that they taught in and outside of the classroom. Lessons about the subject areas as well as lessons about life. God, I ask that the seeds that have been sown would produce much good fruit. I pray that you would comfort their families and their friends, their students, their coworkers. And Father, I also want to thank you for all of those who are currently teaching. I pray that you would bless them as they begin thinking about the upcoming year. I pray that you would be with all support staff and bus drivers and each employee. Father, I thank you this evening for the members of the school board. We thank you for their time and dedication, for their sincere desire to make the best decisions on behalf of our students. Father, I pray that you would grant them wisdom, grant them guidance as they seek that from you. Father, most importantly, I ask that you would bless the students, each one that passes through the school doors. Bless their families and keep them safe. Father, may they grow to be individuals that you have created them to become. We thank you for the greatest teacher, your son, Jesus. May we glorify you through him. We ask in his name. Amen.
Amen. Let us honor the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. Thank you, George. Next, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
And Mr. Gushall made a motion to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have recognition. But Ms. Shepherd, before you recognize, I have one. And as you know, you were hired one year ago this month. And you have been wonderful. And to the staff, the school board office, my colleagues here, to the all employees that we have, I asked about, we have about a thousand. We have fifty-five hundred students, more or less, and the community at large. You have reached out to any person that wanted to talk to you, any group that asked you to attend. You did a wonderful job. And so, my assistant Cheryl has a present for you. Last year, you got one rose, and now we have two. And hopefully, this will continue with your service here. And maybe you'll reach a dozen eventually. I do not think I will be around for that. But we are so blessed to have you. And
Thank you.
Any colleagues would like to share anything?
No, I think you've done really well.
I'm blessed to be here. Shenandoah County is a fantastic community with great people, great staff, great students. I'm blessed to be here. Thank you.
Let anybody talk you out.
Thank you for always thinking of recognizing people. You're, you, you do very well with that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right. Now, we'll turn it over to your recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Helsley. I am so excited to have our director of our Coral program with us here tonight, Ms. Kylene Robinson. So, I will turn the program over to you. Strasburg High School.
So, these three students have just graduated from Strasburg High School. And they attended Allstate Choir, which is quite a high honor. They had to go through a few different auditions to get there, and they had a wonderful experience. And in addition to that, I wanted to tonight present them with the National School Choir Award. It is traditionally presented to one outstanding male and one outstanding female singer. But there can be a tie, and in which case, we did have a tie, and it just so worked out that all three of them went to Allstate. They, I've had these guys since they were in kindergarten. I've taught them all the way through, and they're, they're just outstanding. There is no better people than to have this award. So, Ms. Aliana Miller, Ms. Kaylee Cuff, and Mr. Connor Gottfried. Thank you.
Kaylee, did I meet you at JME?
You did, yes.
Those eyes look familiar, because we had masks on.
Ready, everybody? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That really is a high honor, and I'm so glad you guys got to be in person again this year after a couple of years virtual, which was not nearly as much fun for the people who made it to state. So, congratulations.
So, not only did they receive state recognition, they received national recognition. So, congratulations. We're so proud of you. Mr. Helsley, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next is public comments. Shenandoah County School Board welcomes public comments during most regular meetings and during public meetings, public hearings. School board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting or hearing. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. The board generally allows up to sixty minutes for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. If there are a large number of speakers, the board may limit the total time for comments. All comments should address a matter related to Shenandoah County Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comments that involve a complaint about an individual staff member, a personnel action, a student disciplinary matter, or a complaint about an individual student or pending litigation. The school board expects that each first, each speaker be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with other views. Speaker will address the comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, to the superintendent, to a staff member, to the audit. Speakers will not engage in personal attacks. And this evening, we have Mr. Charles Street.
Good evening. I hope everybody was well. School board members, Superintendent Ms. Malley Shepherd, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd, for your leadership the past year, and also for the Strasburg Allstate Choir. That was pretty interesting. And I would like to heavy heart on the fallen people that have passed away that it's unfortunate. I would just like to find out the status of the Stonewall Jackson track because it was supposed to have been done the first of the month and been finished by the fourteenth. And here we are at the fourteenth, and it's not even started. So, this, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Street. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I so move.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Barlow. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. Do we have discussion? The resolution about technology. Ms. Shepherd, I what is?
Yep. So, we receive three hundred and ten thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Education to purchase technology equipment for our schools. It's so much money per school. And this is just so that we can spend the money before they sell the VS, the bond, to fund it. And once they sell the bond, then they, they will reimburse us our expenditure.
Also, what about the, it's in this about the homeless, we got money. Ms., you will discuss that later?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on consent agenda?
I have one.
Yes.
Happy to see that there's going to be a foreign, oh, I see the answer. Foreign exchange student at Strasburg High School. I was gonna ask, ask for a high school. Thank you.
Do we have a foreign exchange student this year?
Yes, Strasburg High School.
From Spain.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gushall?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Helsley?
Yes. Okay. Okay, section four. Four one. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you. In accordance with the bylaws of the Virginia School Board Association, a school board in good standing will be entitled to one vote in meetings of the Virginia School Board Association. A voting delegate and alternate should be selected from the membership for the V S V A Delegate Assembly at the two thousand twenty-two V S V A Annual Convention, which is November sixteenth through the eighteenth at the Williamsburg Lodge. It is important that all members, all school boards be represented when the V S V A Delegate Assembly convenes. Legislative positions provided, provide the basis for making present and future decisions about educating, education, and school board legislative positions that constitute V S V A's legislative belief system. The lobbying efforts of the association are based on positions contained in the V S V A Legislative Positions Handbook that is approved each year by the V S V A Delegate Assembly. No school board in Virginia is bound by any position of the association or obligated to any call to action. School boards in Virginia have the discretion to adopt a local position that may differ, differ from the, that of the association. The selection of the V S V A delegate and alternate will be an action item on the August eleventh, two thousand twenty-two school board meeting agenda.
Okay, so we'll discuss that and approve the delegate and alternate at our next meeting.
Correct.
So, how do we normally handle this, Cindy?
Just talk amongst ourselves and figure it out. I would be happy to give somebody else a chance if somebody wants to serve as the delegate or alternate delegate.
Okay.
So, we, we can talk amongst ourselves.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm happy to do it too, but I'm fine letting somebody else serve.
Yeah, but you're a pro at it. Okay. All right. Colleagues, you heard the suggestion. So, we'll see this in our August twelfth meeting. All right. Now, let's see. Information. Update from our good Shenandoah County Sheriff's Office. Ms. Shepherd.
So, tonight, I'm happy to introduce Sheriff Carter, who will be giving an update on our, our
School safety.
School safety, yes. Our, our partnership with the sheriff's office and school safety.
Sure. I brought some hard copies. You're welcome.
Thank you.
They just need one copy for the minutes.
All right.
They need a copy for the minutes. They don't have that.
No, I meant like to put it up on the screen. Yeah, we didn't know if, we, for the counting, we usually just bring it up here, pop it in, and let it go. I didn't know if it was doable.
They're all taken care of.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a pointer? Very good. It's awesome. Does it have a yep, green button right there. It gives you the laser pointer. Okay, thank you. All right. I guess this is being viewed behind me or in front of me.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, Ms. Chairman, thank you. First of all, I'd want to thank you all for giving me a few minutes of your time this evening. My name is Tim Carter. I'm the county sheriff. And I do also appreciate the partnership that we have with Shenandoah County Public School System. And I also appreciate that partnership with Ms. Shepherd and all of your school administrators throughout the county. I do have some staff here that I'd like to introduce. Just take a real quick second to do that if I'm, if I may. With me is Lieutenant Whitney Mauk. Whitney's gonna introduce our school resource officers and the schools that they represent, those that could come tonight. So, Whitney?
We have Deputy Natacha Pachatue. She's the school resource officer at Peter Meilerberg Middle School. Deputy Brandon George, he's the school resource officer at Signal Inn. Haley Foley is at Mountain View High School. Justin Thompson is at W W Robinson. Russell Racey is at Sandy Hook Elementary School. Sam Klein is gonna be the SRO Triple Tech this year. Holton Manich is at Strasburg High School. Shane Bollinger is Shane Ballinger is at North Fork Middle School and Victor Green is at Central High School.
Alright, thank you Whitney. Let's see, I think, well. I thought. My little pointer's not moving. Sarah, wait up. I don't, yes, we am. Is it the, the air buttons? We're good?
Yep.
Alright, thank you. Thanks so much, appreciate it. Alright, just a couple things, um. These are the mass shootings so far in the United States this year, by month. It's not all school shootings, but there are shootings where more than one person's been shot. So. It happens, okay? Now, this, if I can get my, um. Player, boy, I, I tell you, this, this little, uh, thing here's. I'm almost wanting to toss it around, toss it away. So I can get to the computer. Alright, thank you. Um, this is a, uh, it's a video. And I'm only gonna show a few seconds of it. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping it will play for me, I think it will.
If there are any children?
Yeah, if there are children here. It's very uncomfortable to watch this. I saw this and what this is, is this is a reenactment of the Columbine shooting. Okay, these are actors, but this is what happened, okay? And the things that are being said and what happened. And it's very uncomfortable, we're not gonna watch all of it, it's like fourteen minutes, um, but if you'll take a minute to watch it. I'm not sure if my volume.
Nine one one, what's your emergency?
Yeah, I, I think there's a shooting at my school.
We have units on the way, can you find, do you see any perpetrators, the men with the guns?
No, not, not really, like, seems like a lot of people are here.
Can you tell me where you are? How many people, can you see the perpetrators, can you see the guys with the gun?
I don't.
Are you inside or outside? Shots fired. Hello? Shots fired. Hello? 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 Can you pick up? Hello?
Hello?
Can you tell me where you are?
Hello?
Can you tell me where you are?
Oh, 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 the shooting in the school.
Where are you at?
Help me, help me, don't fuck your shirt, it's such a fucking cops!
The perpetrator has the phone. Look at the perpetrator's on the phone.
Did you see her fall?
Can you hear me, Andre? Andre, can you pick up?
Hi, how are you? Oh my god!
Two minutes in.
Oh my god! Don't say my name, I'm right here.
The perpetrator's locked into.
Oh, go away, oh!
For actors.
Andre? Can you pick up?
Look at the blood, Jesus.
Some victims may be injured or downed.
Is the gun pointed at you? Shut up. What? What? Are you dead yet? No, you're still alive, aren't you?
The perpetrators are threatening the victims.
Shut up! Shut up!
The perpetrators are threatening victim.
This goes on for about fourteen minutes. Okay? And they killed several people there that, that day. And when I first saw this, I almost gotta have left the room, um, because it's very disturbing when you're watching this and you're sitting there and you're wondering, where, when are, when's somebody coming to help? Okay? Um. Our Shenandoah County Sheriff's Office partnered with the Shenandoah County Public School System, I guess it's been about, um, ten years ago. Dr. Roland was the superintendent at the time. And we basically, um, just to kinda give you a little bit of history to newer board members. Um, if you remember the Sandy Hook shooting in Connecticut. Um. We had an incident at our Sandy Hook, like, two or three days after that. Um, where a person went into our Sandy Hook. And as I recall, I think the purpose of him going in there was to see if he could go in, A, and, um, what kind of level of security he would be met with when he went into the building. And just so you all have an understanding, that basically shut Shenandoah County Public Schools down that day. All of our schools. To the point that we were about two days away from Christmas break and Dr. Roland, uh, the school system made the decision, but of course, you know, I was certainly in support of it, let's let everybody go home for Christmas break and, uh, take a break about this. Because there's that much tension within our schools. Now, after that, we held public meetings, um, we had three public forums, one in the northern end of the county, one in the middle of the county, one in the southern end of the county. Two things came after those forums. There were two major things that, um, the people in Shenandoah County wanted to see here in Shenandoah County. First was they wanted to see a law enforcement officer at each school. We now have a law enforcement officer assigned to each school. Okay? The second thing they wanted was they wanted controlled access to schools. Okay, so, that means you can't just walk into the building like you could when, when we were their age. You have controlled access. Those were the two primary things that came out of those forums. Okay? So I kinda wanna talk a little bit about what SROs do. And then I have a few things that I think you all should, at least I think you should be thinking about, uh, as we move forward. These statistics that are up in front of you right now, that's some of the, some of the things that school resource officers do. Um. One I'd like to point out is the juvenile intervention, uh, calls. Um, and the other one I wanna, well, I'm trying to think, is that on my next slide? Yeah, it's on my next slide, but the first one is the interventions. Here are some other statistics for you. One I'd like to point out here is the T D O E C O, T D O means temporary detention order. E C O means emergency custody order. Those are mental health incidents. Okay? So in last school year, there were twenty-two of those that we worked with, um, your, your school staff with, where there was an actual person taken into custody because they were in mental health or behavioral health stress. Now, when you go back and you look at the interventions, a lot of those are times where you're talking to a kid and they haven't got to that point where they have to have some kind of, uh, custodial thing happen, okay? An intervention is, is you're talking to a person and you're trying to get to them and help them maybe see this person or see that person, or talk to me a little bit today about, you know, how things are going in your life. Okay? But these things are striking to me. We, you know, I can remem, I can remember, that's one of the problems with being, being around for so long. You can remember the days where you didn't have any of those types of calls. We have those types of calls daily. Okay? And I want you all to know that. Um, the weapons violations that we had this past year, I believe all those were knives, correct? Okay, so last year, we only had incidents with knives at school that we, that we were dealing with. Um, we'll talk about some others later, but those are the ones that we dealt with this past school year. Now, some of the things, I'm sure that was a question on your minds when you started to see the, uh, the media reports of Uvalde and some, maybe some other incidents, uh, throughout the country of what we do here. It's a continual process in Shenandoah County. And I can't say enough also about Ms. Litten and your administrative staff and what they do on, on the school side of this. They're doing things from a preparedness standpoint, we're doing things from a preparedness standpoint. Um, and together, I think we're really working hard and I think we have been for several years, um, to prepare ourselves for, for what we, we hope would never happen here. Uh, all my school resource officers are required to go through what's called School Resource Officer Basic Training. That's in addition to their law enforcement certification. They are all required to attend active shooter, interior response, campus crime prevention training, uh, Virginia school and campus violence training conferences and Virginia school and campus safety training conferences. These are training conferences and conferences that, uh, give them information on what are best practices throughout the country, what are best practices through the state, what are the new, what are the new laws in the state that they need to be mindful of? What are the new requirements of the school system and school administrators, what they're required to do? So we work with that every year as we're trying to prepare ourselves to respond and to provide good service for Shenandoah County. We're actually having, by the way, um. I think I have that on here on the next slide, we're actually having an active shooter, um, training, uh, at each of the three campuses next week, okay? Um. It's a two-part training at each campus. The first part would be what, what is called a tabletop exercise, where you sit down with school administrators, you sit down with emergency response personnel and managers and you talk about what would happen if this scenario occurred or if this scenario occurred, and you kinda walk yourselves through that on a tabletop, okay? The afternoon will be spent with drills, uh, with regard to responding to active shooter incidents in each school. And we're doing that in conjunction with, um, our office, Shenandoah County Fire and Rescue and the town police departments as well. I think Virginia State Police has been invited to that as well, okay? So, so we're doing that with a lot of agencies so that we can make sure that as many people can come, come. Um, I'm very, I'm very wary to be critical of other agencies. Cause I know that people can always poke, you know, poke holes at what you're doing and, um. I just, I don't do that, alright? But one of the things that I'm kinda sorta looking at from the response in Uvalde, it seems to me that you had, uh, just from an outsider looking in, you had, you had several agencies and you, you had some communication issues there and, um, um, we're working on that here in Shenandoah County and I think we have worked on that in the past. So it's something that we're cognizant of and then when you go to look at, look at the media reports of Uvalde, then you think, okay, there's where, a situation where maybe they weren't working on it as hard as they could have been, maybe, I don't know. Um, so that's actually happening next week. Um, and one more thing about that, uh, Ms., Dr. Shepherd, we, you know, um, we don't like to make it a, uh, what's the word I'm thinking about? Um. A big dramatic thing, public thing. I would rather that we get people there, like the staff, they get the training and they go through the training that we have for them and they don't have to worry about, um, doing an interview that day for the local media. Okay, so that's something we haven't done here in the past. Um, I get it, you wanna make sure that the media knows and the public knows that you're on top of these things, I understand that. But I also understand that, um, my, my focus is the protection of the students in those schools, the school staff and those people that are visiting those schools. Um, we're not trying to make a, um, a show out of this, okay? So that's not happening next week. Um, so anyway, at least not from our perspective. We have all of our, our school resource officers are, are active shooter instructor certified. Um, we participate in active shooter training within our agency and outside of our agency. Um. There's a program, um, that we've, we've bought into, it's called the Active Shooter Alice Training Program. That's alert, lockdown, inform, counter evacuate, that we work on, we have instructors in that and we also work with Shenandoah County Public School Staff, um, with regard to that program. Um, we participate in your all, you all do an annual safety audit, we always participate in that audit. Um, and, uh, safety assessment audit. And that's something that, um, that I think's important that, that we do and something that I think, um, you all need to be aware of and be mindful of as you're making your priorities in the future for school safety. Some things that students do, I mean, we do, um, go over. We have a, a leadership camp, I know there's other school programs, this is kind of a weak slide to be quite frank with you, but I know we have some, uh, some school leadership, uh, stuff that we do. Um, there's some other school programs or, uh, uh, private entity programs that are being, that are being taught out there for students. Um, and I'm, I'm certain there's also certain drills and things that you all are doing and required to do with regard to students within the facilities. Now, people always ask this question of me, um, has it ever happened here? No, thank goodness, it hasn't happened here. Um, but I will say, um, on the next couple slides, and again, we, we don't try to make a big deal out of this, but you all need to know that these things have actually happened, serious things have happened in this county. The second bullet, we had, we had some kids that, uh, um, and this has been a few years ago, um, that were planning a school attack here. Um, we found maps, we found other things, um, with regard to their planning. And, um, thankfully, we had school administrators, we had school resource officers that intervened before anything like that ever happened. Um. On the second, on the next slide, we did have a student who had brought a handgun to school in a building. Um, handgun was loaded. Um, it actually occurred on a day of a school pep rally. I'm not sure, I think, as I remember, that was a student that thought he was, he was in fear of something or what, what was the reason behind that, do you remember?
He just had it in his waistband.
Just carrying, okay, alright, so just carrying it. Okay, um, so we have had those things happen in Shenandoah County. And those are some of the things that have happened, uh, over, over the course of time. It's all about relationships. Okay? Um. I don't know why certain jurisdictions have gotten rid of their school resource programs, school resource officer programs, I really don't understand why. We've taken the position here that our school resource officers are to form relationships with their principals, with their school administrators, with their teachers and with their students. And that's something that we've, we push and we push and we push and we push. They are not there, uh, to be the disciplinarian. They're not there if somebody's running in the hall and I'm gonna stop the kid from running in the hall. That's not the school resource officer's position. Their position is just to form those relationships, be a resource to the school system and provide whatever, whatever the school system needs in the course of the normal business of the day, but also to be there to protect the staff, the students and those people visiting that, that facility. I've seen some agencies over my career that, um, I think they focus their school resource officer programs on more punitive actions. Um, and, uh, I, that, from time to time, we have to charge a juvenile, it happens. Um, from time to time, uh, a child commits a crime, we have to deal with that. Um, but our focus is on relationships. That's our focus. And I sometimes think that those agencies that are focusing on the punitive side of this, um, it may work for a while, but over the course of time. it may work for a while, but over the course of time, that begins to degrade. And that's just my, my thought about that. Some of our school resource officers. Now, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about something that's concerning to me, and it's really difficult to see on these maps, but just, this is your northern campus, okay? If you can see, up in here is Stralsburg High School. Here's the bridge, then you go to the other two schools, okay? I'm gonna get to a point, because they're all very similar. Here's your central campus, okay? This is Peter Mullenberg, WW, Central High School, kind of locked in there together, okay? And your southern campus, a little bit more spread out, I guess, if you wanna look at it that way. Honey Run, High School, Middle School. Now, one of the suggestions that I'm gonna make to you all, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a contractor, I'm not into those things. But let me tell you something. When these campuses were designed, they weren't designed with emergency egress and ingress capability. Okay? We get criticism almost every school year. I don't know if you got this last year or not, but we, we get it every year. And it's usually about traffic in the mornings. Y'all probably even get the phone calls too, don't you? Okay? I'm not talking about that. What I'm talking about is if we have a critical incident on these campuses and everything gets locked down around the campus. Well, look at the northern campus, District Five. There ain't but one way in and one way out, okay? Now, that's no one's fault. It is just what it is. But at some point, I would ask that this body sit down with people that are a little bit more educated and they, they know these kinds of things. They understand stormwater runoff, they understand, you know, what the difference between a driveway and a road is, and they understand easements, and they understand all this stuff. And I would ask that this body take a real hard look at that, at your three campuses, with some people that are more knowledgeable than I am about that, because if you notice what it's like on a normal school day, can you imagine what it would be like in a critical incident? You can't imagine. Not only are your parents not gonna be able to get there, we're not gonna be able to get people out of there. I'm not gonna be able to get emergency responders in there. It's, it's gonna be a problem, okay? And it's nothing that anyone did. No one's being blamed here, and it's a heavy lift. I get that, but it's something that I think Shenandoah County at some point needs to have some discussion about. Okay? The next thing I want to point out are three schools in particular. This is Sandy Hook. This is your Sandy Hook. There's the main entrance there, okay? This is WW Robinson. Let's see, the main entrance there. This is Honey Run, main entrance there, okay? I'm gonna make a request of this body tonight, and that is that somewhere, at some point, CIP request is made that you create some kind of a vestibule standoff area for those three schools, okay? Just like you've done with your middle schools. Your middle schools have that. Now, that's not to say that those three schools don't have controlled access. They do, but I think you need to take the next step. And I think it's important that we get that put on the front burner, in my opinion, okay? That has to come from this body. This body has to put that, has to put that on your priority list and decide that this is something you want to do. Yes, it is a little bit more inconvenient to get into the school, but time, ladies and gentlemen, is what I'm asking for. And time is what people in that school would be asking for if there's a critical incident in that school. And by giving that standoff time, that gives us time, okay? Now, at WW Robinson, I will say this, they, they kind of sort of done that where they bring people into the front office. I personally, I, I get it, understand why they're doing it. If you're asking my opinion about it, it's not optimal, because you're bringing them into the office, and the office is where everything's being controlled, and that's where the phone calls are going out of, and that's where all the, that's the nerve center of what's going on. They ought to be set up more like the other schools where they're not being brought into that main office, okay? But I would ask that you please take a look at that here in Shenandoah County. Again, I've had the recommendation there for the ingress and egress for emergency response. And last but not least, we've taken analysis, when we first set this up, there was a friend of mine, he was on the school board, a guy named Rick Coontz. And Mr. Coontz and I had a lot of, a lot of conversations about staffing when we were, when we were going through this in the beginning, and we're somewhere in that ninety-five percentile on, in the school. But just like you have teachers that have an illness that comes up in the morning, I got an SRO that might be sick in the morning, just like you have teachers that have to go to the bathroom, SROs have to go to the bathroom once in a while, okay? They have to eat. So from time to time, somebody might not be right there, okay? And what we're prepared to do is, Fire Rescue has what they call like a floater position in Shenandoah County. It's a unit that, it's my understanding that it's on duty during certain times of the day, and its whole purpose is to be there for, uh, uh, coverage for units that are out of service for one reason or another. Our plan is, is to ask for a position. Whitney does most of this now, but I need another person, and we're gonna ask for that in our budget for next year. So those would be, in my opinion, there's a lot of stuff that's being done in school safety in Shenandoah County that I'm not even going into tonight. They could probably, your school staff could probably give you a whole presentation on that. But I just kind of wanted to tell you, that's, this is where we're at, from this, from the high level, to let you know that we appreciate everything that this board and previous boards have done for us and helped us with, that this superintendent and her staff and the previous superintendents and their staffs have worked with us on. I can't say enough about the relationship that we have with Shenandoah County Public School System. And I, I for one wanted to continue. We're always constantly trying to improve what we're doing and the services that we're providing. And any way we can try to make that better, we try to do that, okay? But can't do that without this body and the support of this body. So I do appreciate that very much. If you have any questions of me or anything, this presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Question?
I have a couple of comments. I think, I think when we're looking at our long-term facility plan, we definitely need to look at ingress and egress, and I've been saying that for seven years, but you know, I also see these guys directing traffic every morning when I'm dropping kids off, and and I know the northern campus is just as bad or worse than the central campus, so I do think that that's definitely something that we need to, to focus on.
By understanding, I think in the northern campus, I think I saw something where they're gonna widen a turn lane there. And that's good, it's needed.
It's a V-dot thing.
Yeah, that's, right, that's a V-dot thing, and
It's a Band-Aid.
Ms. Walsh, I think it's needed, yeah, it needs to be better.
Yeah, definitely.
And this is not, I mean, this is a heavy, it'd be a heavy lift for, for anyone. But I really think that we're at that point in Shenandoah County where I think we need to start talking about that. I can't tell you all how, you know, I go around, around the Commonwealth, and I, and I know a lot of people that have been in law enforcement or still in law enforcement and police departments and sheriff's offices around the state. We're doing a lot of good stuff here. There's a lot of good things in Shenandoah County that we're doing that you should be proud of with regard to school safety and what your school administration is doing. But we're at the point now where we need to be talking about these things. We really are.
The vestibule thing is another thing that sort of gets me, because at Robinson, the three nicest ladies on the planet would be the first to go, you know? If, if somebody entered into the office directly. So, so I do see, we call it the airlock, the area between the front door and then into the building at the middle schools and at Central. I, I do see the need for that at our elementary schools too. And I'd like to see that sooner rather than later, if possible.
I don't, you know, again, I'm not a contractor, but I gotta tell you, I don't think that would be a real complicated fix. I think there are people, and you can talk to a contractor that knows, but I think that they could take care of that for you.
It just costs money.
So we do have the vestibules in our CIP plan I was pulling up. Probably not enough to cover all three of our elementary schools, but there definitely is some, that, the vestibules is in our CIP plan.
Right, right, okay.
I guess the last thing is, I was the only one who was on the board during that Columbine-like incident, and I just remember how well you all worked with the principal on that, and how important, how important that relationship is between the SROs and you and the principals, because it was a scary situation, and there was a lot going on, and there was a lot of detail to that. And I just can't imagine if you guys didn't have that communication. So I really appreciate it. I, I was also around when the hearings were going on about whether or not to have SROs, and I do remember people were pushing back on it, and you know, these are the reasons why it's not gonna work. These are the reasons why it's not enough, or, or it's pointless. You're not gonna save anybody, you know? And I remember at the time, I didn't know enough about it. You know, I really didn't know enough about it to take a position. But since then, I have seen how important the SROs are in our school, not just for, not just for the job that they're there to do, but the other things. Like Kyle and I did a tour of the central campus schools, and an officer needed to help de-escalate the situation. You know, he wasn't, he wasn't punishing. He was just trying to help calm somebody down. And then I did Robinson by myself, and the same thing happened there. And it's just, it's so important to have that extra, extra person there, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate all you do. Thank you.
You have a comment? Yeah?
Thanks for all you all do. I would, obviously, as a former student, Deputy Green was there, and I think when I was in at least middle school and then high school as well, so he kind of moved up as we, as I got older, but great experience and always doing a great job, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I appreciate everything you do. And I was gonna ask, you know, I look at the size of our campuses, and what, I'm interested to know what the day in the life of an SRO looks like. I mean, if, I mean, are they sitting, you know, and they're protecting the front, or, you know, there's so much that could go on. I agree, there probably needs to be more. I, I can't imagine one person protecting one building. So that would be something that I would be interested in. When there's a day off, when somebody, how do you cover that? If there's, say, at the northern campus, if something happens at North Fork, does Sandy Hook cover? Does the town of Stralsburg come in and cover? So you know, those logistics, because if you leave one to cover, then we have one that's empty. So I definitely think that we're probably understaffed as far as SROs go. As far as Texas, we have to remember that though this, Uvalde was, was a terrible, terrible tragedy, just a few weeks ago, there was another one where it was just two minutes. Law enforcement did exactly what they were supposed to do. If you try to find that now, you can't find that information. It's only, so you know, while we, you know, the, the media plays on emotions to get certain responses, I like to recognize that people do do their jobs, and they do them successfully. And that was a, you know, a, a situation that I don't think that we'd have any problems with here in Shenandoah County. I think we have a good, a good force here. I think I asked you one time about metal detectors, if we're ready for that. And I know that, you know, the aesthetics of putting those into our, our schools, you know, are, is something on the mind, but we walk through them when we go to Walmart, if we go to the, the courthouse. It's something that we do. Is it a failsafe? Absolutely not, but it's probably something that knives would be picked up, probably, things of that nature. Of course, you just never underestimate the brilliance of a child or the creativity of a criminal, so. But I do appreciate, like I said, every, everything that you do. Seven hundred kids, it sounds like we have a juvenile in crisis problem here in the county, but it's getting there.
Look, I, I'm not really sure, we're seeing mental health stuff a lot in the last twelve months, and it's not just kids, it's adults. I, I don't know what's going on with that. I just know that it's taking an inordinate amount of time for law enforcement. Well, not just law enforcement, but law enforcement and all of the allied professionals that we work with, whether it be the hospital or Northwestern or the Shenanah County Public School System. I don't know why that is. If I had the answer to that, I probably wouldn't be standing here today, but I don't know why. But it is a lot, and certainly if, you know, I would, I would have that invitation to any of, any of the board members, if anyone wanted to be with a, a school resource officer at a particular campus or have that opportunity, so we would, we'd make that happen, if, if you all want to do something like that. And we're also open to additional, additional ideas if the public, if that's what the public wants. I think, you know, my, my position with regard to, with regard to serving as the county sheriff is, is, you know, I can make recommendations, but I'm basically, the bottom line is, is I'm gonna do with what I am given, the best job that I can. But having said that, if the public demands a certain thing, which they did when we had those public forums, certainly we're gonna move heaven and earth to make that happen. So I would, you know, it might be something you want to consider talking to the public and seeing where they're at with some of those ideas.
Well, I, I only have one request from you, since you are on the, you know, front lines of all this. When it goes, and, and we've kind of had conversations about budgets, and we all know how difficult that can be to get things. It's to push our board of supervisors for some of these community services such as Northwestern, such as DSS. You know, we don't have a drug intake for anybody to really walk in if they wanted to seek those services. And those budgets aren't really being addressed. I think it's time that, that we start putting some of our, our funds back into the, believe it or not, the bottom line of what serves the community, those frontline services, the most, and, and I would just ask for your help in pushing that.
I'm always, always willing to challenge my board, and we always have a good, we have a good relationship. But I'm, yes ma'am, that's not a problem. So I can do that.
I have a few comments. First of all, the resource officer at Central did his job a couple of weeks ago when he saw this farmer sitting on the curb outside of the gym, and he came down to investigate who this person was.
Good, that's good.
So anyway, he's doing his job. He didn't come too close, he recognized me, whatever. And I just read in the, in the D and R, our Hirstenburg, we are blessed, they do not have resource officers in all their schools. They only have six for the whole county. And I think they're gonna address that, whatever. And then, I, I found an article, but I'm struggling to find it on the phone, on my phone, whatever. A mother asks her son, what's up with this, you know, obviously? And the son, I'm gonna paraphrase it, and the son says, it's not the guns. It's about the, no one It's about the, no one sees the kids, no one listens to the kid. Okay, that's how they get attention, through the media, whatever. And the son suggests that each adult reach out to a kid, a five-minute conversation, and get him off the phone and just have a hard-to-hard conversation. Now, that's easier than the done.
Right.
And, uh, but the, the young man had a point, it's not about the guns. And, um, anyway, but also, there's new technology coming down the pike about, of schools. I woke up, I don't know, 2:00 AM and I saw it on my favorite news, that it's almost like smoke detectors. In each classroom, they will sense if somebody's in there with a gun. It goes to a command center.
Okay.
And they trigger your plan that you're gonna practice next week. I don't, I'm not, I mean, I imagine that's gonna be very expensive, but it's something that you probably already aware of, that the technology is coming down the pike to try and prevent what happened in Texas.
Okay.
And we need to get on board in that, I mean.
Right.
So.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, Dennis.
So, yeah, that brings up, one of the things you mentioned earlier, which, uh, which you ended with, we're, I'm pretty, uh, on fire about would be allowing people to, to either use us as a filter or just come to you guys with some ideas. The problem is, I'm sure that, you know, we, we've all been hearing ideas the last couple of weeks about, you know, what can happen. You guys can't be showered with these kind of things. Is there any way we can kinda control, uh, or so, some sort of dialogue by which if somebody says, like if, I don't know if you're, like, teachers have a little, a little gizmo where they push the button when there's something goes wrong and it, apparently it doesn't cost too much. But I mean, there are ideas like that out there. Um, is there any way we can, uh?
And I think, I, I think there's a continual dialogue with staff and, and school officials on, on some of those ideas. I mean, some, some things we're doing now came from those kinds of conversations.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a, I don't wanna say a tip line or something like that, but I mean, some way in which we can aggregate this stuff, so there's just not a snowflake of these things just, you know, coming down and you, and hitting with your, I guess I'm just trying to say, if we could codify some of these ideas so that they're not just randomly thrown out there and hard to deal with.
And one of the things I think, if, if my memory serves me correct, I know when you all, and this, the school basically, um, leads this effort, there's a, there's a, um, a critique each year of where there's an assessment of school safety and things like that. So those things are being done every year with school. Now, that's, I'm not sure if parents are involved in that, um.
Typically.
I think it's just school and, school staff and, uh, and SROs. I don't know whether there could be a, a component placed in that or not. I mean, that might be a question for school staff, if, yeah.
Is there just some way that they could be collected, aggregated and dealt with in some systemic ways?
And you could bring that in, bring that into that vetting process. Yes, sir, I agree. It's not a bad idea.
Uh, also, I'd like to personally, uh, thank you for having deputies at our last couple, uh, school board meetings and, uh, your call personally to me.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, to set up when, uh, I worked at, that was the last one, you know, you reach out to me.
Yes, sir.
But the, uh, audience was, it was great. We didn't need them, but having their presence, uh, was really important.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
I just have one final statement that I would like to thank, um, Sheriff Carter and his staff for being here tonight. Our partnership with them is so valuable because they're so, um, they're welcome in our schools and they do such a great job of creating relationships with our school staff and our students that it's, um, it's phenomenal. We really appreciate it, so thank you so much.
You know, I really can't take all the credit. I mean, the staff do all the work and, and I appreciate everything that they do. And I can't tell you enough about the relationship that I have with you and your staff. They, they're tremendously helpful. I really appreciate that. Um, but I would, I'd also like to, uh, there was a friend of mine, a guy named, I take credit for this, but I'll, I'll hear about it later if I do. And it points on something you said, Ms., Ms., uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there was a friend of mine, his name was Keith Rowland, who was the superintendent here for a while. And he used to have a saying, and his saying was, is sometimes you gotta be the parent. Gotta be the parent, gotta have that tough conversation with the kid. Guys spend time with the kid. I wonder sometimes if that's not enough of that happening out there.
Oh, it's not.
Um, but, you know, we always keep reminding these parents they gotta be the parent. So you guys, you guys do a good job. Thank you so much, and again, thanks so much for.
I mean, I think it, the public needs to know, people in Shenandoah County needs, you know, you're, you know, we're working together.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I mean, this is my third year on and this is the first time the sheriff has made a presentation about school safety.
You call me anytime, I'll come.
Okay.
Yes, sir. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay, uh, five-two, an update on weekday religious education. Kyle Gutshol is on the advisory committee and, go ahead.
I'd like to invite George Bowers up. Mr. Bowers is gonna give a report on weekday religious education. And, uh, I know that there's a lot of time going into the planning for the upcoming school year and we're looking forward to having that work once again in a full school year.
Absolutely. What a, what a perfect setup. Um, we think weekday religious education is an opportunity to be able to prevent some of the very things we've just heard about. So, um, Madam Superintendent, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you this evening. It's, uh, a pleasure also to have, uh, some folks off of our, um, executive, uh, group here tonight. Steve Wood is our treasurer, appreciate his service. And, uh, Pastor Katie is our, um, secretary. There's John Graver, who's acting as our vice president, was not able to make it, but we've got about fifteen that have been working really hard. And as, uh, Sheriff Carter said, um, a lot of folks do the work and we appreciate what everybody has done. Um, we are so very delighted that, to report that weekday religious education, after thirty-two years, was reborn in Shenandoah County this spring. Thank you all for helping to make that possible. We had twenty-one students from three different elementary schools over four weeks. Um, just prior to Easter, they started and we stopped just before the Easter break. And, uh, students after that, I think, had to turn their attention towards some of those wonderful things they enjoy called test. Um, the Book of Zechariah, the prophet says, despise not the day of small things. And so we rejoice to see the beginnings of, uh, what happened this year and looking forward to what is to come. We are very thankful for the entities that helped us and particularly that hosted our students. Um, Shenandoah Caverns at the south end of the county, the Redemption Hill Nazarene Church here in the center part of the county, and the Stralsburg Presbyterian Church on the northern end of the county. Um, seemed to go off without a hitch. Each of the participating students received a certificate and a Bible at the end of their time with us. We continue to pray for those students and their families. Uh, we continue to pray for the members of the school board and the administrators, both on the county level as well as on the individual school levels. Um, we are looking forward to welcoming second and fourth graders this fall. Um, we are hoping to start those release time classes September the twelfth and going through April the fifth. Um, and then looking forward in twenty-twenty-three to adding third grade so that we would have second, third, and fourth graders in the, in the fall of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, we're in the process of, uh, beginning to get word out to students. Parents before very long are gonna be thinking about back to school. And so we are ramping up our efforts to get the word out. We are looking forward to have a booth at the fair. We're looking forward to having a table at the Family Fun Fest for Christ. We're looking forward to, um, getting out some radio advertisements, newspaper information and, uh, other ways to try to communicate with parents so that they will know this option is available to them. We are also in the process of forming the official board. Um, up until now, we've been operating kind of as a steering committee and our bylaws do call for a board of directors with representation from each of the different three school divisions in the county or, or, uh, districts. And so we're working towards that. We have another meeting on Monday and, uh, we're gonna be giving some more attention to that. Was, um, thankful to have teacher Michaela Wetzel. She was coming back from her vacation today and, uh, not able to join us tonight, but look forward to an opportunity for you to meet her. And also our aide Kathy Rivers, we could not ask for any better personnel. They are just outstanding, just fantastic. So thankful for, um, God providing them. We're thankful for some bus drivers that have done a fantastic job as well. Um, we had folks that stepped up at exactly the right time to be able to provide first aid CPR training for our personnel just before we were ready to start. So we're thankful for that as well as to the Rockingham and State Weekday Religious Education Associations for helping, uh, to organize all that, uh, needed to come together, providing curriculum and advice along the way. Uh, we do have broad-based support cooperation from a lot of folks throughout the county. And, um, I wanna do, I wanna make sure we thank, um, Superintendent Shepherd and the other professionals in the school system that have been very helpful and facilitating and drawing together the particulars to make this work. Um, we're grateful to Jesus who has given us the best story ever to share. And, uh, we pray that what we provide is a blessing to our students, a blessing to the schools. Um, as we just heard, current events continue to reinforce the need for our students to have spiritual connections, spiritual groundings. Um, and, and to reach these kids, let them know, we love them before they hurt themselves or hurt somebody else. And so we wanna, we wanna be a piece of that puzzle. Uh, we wanna make sure they know that God loves them and we do too. And so we appreciate, um, the opportunity that we've had this spring to be able to begin that process and look forward to starting again, uh, in the near future. So, uh, that's kinda the summary that I have. Don't know if you have any questions or not, but I'd be happy to respond, uh, the best I can.
Questions to George?
How many students did you end up with?
Twenty-one this spring, twenty-one.
A bad take or just a couple of months?
We, I think officially, um, you folks adopted the policy in February and we started in mid-March. A lot of things had to happen in between, uh, those two things and they did, so.
Questions? Well, I, I, the only thing I would say, I don't know who told me this story, but, uh, a little boy, uh, was in one of your sessions or whatever and it was the first time that child was in the church. And he asked the instructor to pray for my parents. If that's not an indication, if, if just one person, one person, it was worth it. So I, um, I was touched by that.
The, uh, the, Michaela, uh, Ms. Wetzel does a fantastic job working with those students, relating to them as does Ms. Rivers. And, um, one of the parts of the, uh, presentation each week is an opportunity to hear whatever is on their hearts, prayer concerns that, uh, they may have. And, um, the first couple of classes I sat in on to observe and to hear those, uh, kids share some of the things that are on their heart, they, they need, they need that spiritual connection, so.
Okay, thank you, George.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle, for serving on that committee for us, the board. Okay, moving on, uh, five-three, uh, Ms. Stein, oh, she's already coming up.
I didn't want to act late too long. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, obviously you kinda jumped in the head a little bit ago, um, regarding one of these. These are just, um, some housekeeping to, um, get the appropriations made for some additional funding that we've been presented with, um, which is always good. So I like coming up here with more money, um, instead of wanting to spend some more. But, um, at any rate, the first one is some, uh, CTE funding for the Perkins. Uh, came in a little bit higher than what we had originally allocated, only six thousand dollars, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, the second one, um, this is actually kind of exciting. Um, Todd Lynn went through the process and we, um, are fortunate enough to get the Claude Moore, um, education grant again. Um, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars is awarded to us. Um, a hundred and six thousand of it is actually for a simulator, um, ambulance, um, which is real exciting. Um, they're gonna actually partner with the Shenandoah County Fire and Rescue Department as well, um, so maybe can get some more volunteers in the community. Um, this is about an eight-month project, um, to build. So, um, Todd is anxiously awaiting, um, approval of these funds so that he can, um, get that ball rolling. So this, that's, that's really exciting. Um, and the last one, I think, was the one that you, um, were talking about, the homeless grant.
Yes.
Um, so this is, uh, Deb Litten has worked real hard on this. We're getting about thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, and it's a consortium. They worked in a group, uh, to get some funding. These are ARPA funds, additional ARPA funds. And, uh, they will be used to, um, buy supplies and storage units and, uh, for identified homeless children in our division. Um, they're gonna distribute these school supplies. They, um, are gonna distribute reading materials to help promote literacy to these children. Um, so it's another good program. Any questions?
Questions? Colleagues?
And I guess it'll be up for your vote in, uh, the August twelfth meeting, or August.
Eleven.
Eleven. Thank you. All right, you good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
From Ms. Shepherd, that, uh, that covers five-three, five-four and five-five.
That's correct. She's very efficient. Yes, and she's very efficient.
She is. That's why we sold her from the county.
That's right.
All right, so we're on six action items, is that correct? Okay, do I hear a motion to, uh, approve the personnel?
I move that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Walsh to approve the personnel as presented. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. Discussion? Roll call vote please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gutshol?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Ellsley?
Yes. Okay, six-two, policy update. Dr. Heingardner.
Yes, uh, in front of you, you will see the policy updates for, for this month. They were for information last, last month and action this month. One thing that I would like to ask you to consider is to approve these policies with the exception of policy KLB. I would, we'd like to spend some more time, uh, visiting that, revisiting that policy and make sure it's acceptable. Um, so if, if you wanna look at that, that has to do, that policy KOB is one that we have edited from the VSBA recommendation. Um, it's the public complaints about learning resources. And we'd just like to spend some more time with you to be able to digest any changes that you might see appropriate. Um, so we'd just ask that you pull that from the approval list, that's policy KOB.
Questions?
I have, um, I have some comments. Um, it's, um, pretty overwhelming, uh, for us to look at, I think I counted twenty-seven of these policies, uh, all of which are meaningful, uh, and, uh, and important. And, uh, I certainly didn't feel that I have the, uh, ability to go through these line by line and figure out. And we're all about policy. So I feel a little, uh, overwhelmed and, uh, un- underarmed to be able to, to do this. Um, what, uh, causes me some, some, uh, concern, extra concern is that, um, in my career in the Pentagon, federal life, State Department, DOD, it was pretty easy to follow the concept of policy from legislature through the White House and white papers and policies and operational, uh, strategic, down to the tactical. So it was, you could always find where you were. Dealing with, um, your staff, which is working on these things to make it easier for us. And I want you to know how much I appreciate you doing that because otherwise we'd be stuck with having it to ourselves and you guys are making it graspable, okay? But, um, and then, but you also have a relationship, we have a relationship with the, uh, with the Virginia School Board Association, which I will define as kind of a quasi, uh, legal organization. Uh, and my own, uh, concept of how we get policy. And my own concept of how we get policy guidance from the executive is unclear at this point, to be perfectly honest with you. So what, and I, I want to thank Ms. Shepherd for trying to make a lot of this clear to me this last week, as I've been struggling with this. And I think other members of the board have the same concerns. I don't think I'm alone. I'm not just saying everybody, but I'm saying some do. Going forward, I would like to have some sort of, and maybe we, we could have a, a discussion at the work session about, about how we see this. You, Dr. Heingartner, are especially familiar with the whole thing. I could probably answer a lot of the questions, just with some sort of tutorial or questions or discussion. And I think, I think we need that. I know I need it. And so to be able to come to make a little bit more sense out of this, I mean, for instance, in these twenty, if we had some sort of sites as to what legal antecedencies come from, or some crosswalk with those, or, or, or other, other indications of where the, the, the code gave rise to that, or, and/or policy guidance from Richmond or elsewhere, would really, really make it easier for us to try to deal with it. Because when you just see this stuff written there and you say, like, when that, that one we're going to review, I'm scratching my head saying, this doesn't make sense to me, and I don't know what to do about it. So if you're okay with your staff kind of trying to help us figure out what you do and how you try to make that work for us, I would feel much more comfortable trying to make policy if I knew actually how it was done in the system and, and, and how the relationships are working. Is that a fair request to ask of your staff for a work session? And I'll just, I'll just ask you?
Yep, that is a fair request, and we have policies probably three or four times a year. So we could have the first reading be at a, a public session like tonight, and then maybe a second session where we could discuss the policies that you have concern at a work session, which would be our, you know, our 4:00 PM start, and then we could do approval at the, at the third school board meeting, which would be a public meeting like this evening as well, so.
Okay. I, I think that would allow us time to, when we did ask the question, to be able to figure out where the antecedent was, where the, and go to the, go to the language itself to see kind of what, what the parameters are, what we're actually required to do and prescribed from doing. So, so that, I think that would be a big help. And I'm asking you to be helpful with us in trying to ask those kind of questions, because you're way ahead of us in terms of being able to deal with these. And I just think it's, if we've got that responsibility, I want to make sure that we, we know as much about it as we can and not trying to shoot from the hip, because that causes problems for everybody.
Absolutely.
So thank you, I.
Randy, you had an email about this.
I did, I did. And Mr. Heingartner was wonderful in answering my questions. I really appreciate that. My question had, or my concern actually had to do with policy CLA. And you know, coming out of, coming out of the legislative, the election season, you know, CLA containing this code SB thirty-six, it made headlines, and we were all thrilled that it's some, you know, given Fairfax and given some of the things going on allowed, and that now certain incidents have to be reported to the Sheriff's Department. There's, there's no option. As I was reading down through this, though, one of these caught my eye that was concerning to me, and it's on page twenty-five, and it talks about any threat, written threats against school board or school personnel while on a school bus, school property, or a sponsor, school-sponsored activity. And when you read back down through this, the very next page talks about, and it refers back up to these, to these, these clauses, and one says, you know, you report to law enforcement any incident, any incident, wait, if I'm, described in clauses one, A, three through seven, and this policy, of this policy accepted at a principle is not required, but may report to local law enforcement agency any incident described in, in section one-four, one-A four, which is what I read, committed by a student who has a disability. So I was, Dr. Heingartner was very good in, in, you know, answering my questions with that, you know, which a student with a disability is defined with anyone within IP. You know, for me, that broadens, broadens the amount, not that, by no means am I suggesting that we wouldn't report incidents, but this gives, at some point, we may not all be here. Mrs. Shepherd, who keeps getting recruited to other parts of the, of the state by people, you know, may decide to move on. We want to make sure that we protect our, our staff. And I think when you make a threat against our staff or our, our teachers, I find it to be one of the most egregious things that you can do. So, you know, to know that this was written, that we would, we were going to report things, and then we leave this little clause in here, I'm really kind of disappointed with Richmond that we did that. So, you know, I would like to see us review this portion of it and take it a step further, that, you know, while we have, when I looked up the definition of, of how we find that the VDOE determines, you know, a, a disability, it covers a broad spectrum. It cause, you know, causes not only, you know, includes autism, but it also includes speech impediments. It includes things that behavioral-wise, you know, we, we should, you know, just as a, we should let someone off the hook for. That's, and, and you know, when you talk about disability, it's, it's a, it's a tender subject. And I don't want to, you know, stigmatize anybody, but at the same time, I would like to see all incidents reported. I take it very seriously if a student makes a, a threat against, and our, and our, our staff should feel like they have that backup. Not that it wouldn't be reported, but I would like to see us back it up with something a little bit more concrete, that we will record it. You know, the Sheriff's Department was just here. They have given a, a great presentation. Things happen. To be honest with you, I would rather see if there is an incident down the road that allows for something horrible or horrendous to happen. It wasn't that we didn't do a reporting of, of red flags prior to that. So that one was, was, you know, one that I, that particularly struck me. You know, as well as Dennis, I think that these things probably should be discussed in a work session. It's part of what, as a board, we're elected to do and what the Constitution of Virginia, you know, tasks us with doing, is to know what we're, is to know our policies and to make sure that they work for Shenandoah County. And, you know, I'm with Dennis. I'm not a big fan of the VSBA. I'm not sure, like I said, you know, I understand the school systems. We, we kind of feed off each other. However, I'm not sure that somebody in Virginia Beach is well put to make policy for Shenandoah County. So I would like to have at least this one reviewed, but I do agree with the ex, the exemption on, on the last one.
Other discussion, Kyle?
Just real briefly, I guess as a school board member, we are tasked to policymaking. That's one of the big things, other than the budget, et cetera. And I agree that I don't think any of us want to sit up here and be rubber stampers and just, you know, push everything through. I think we need to actually go through and look. Dennis and Randy, both of those are good examples. I agree with you. I mean, the VSBA, there's positives and negatives. It's tough to compare, you know, legislation that's passed in Northern Virginia to something in Southwest, Southwest Virginia. So I do think that's tough, but, you know, we do need to really go through these things and make sure that we know what we're passing and, you know, something that the public is comfortable with. And I think that, you know, we've had some opportunities to take a look, but like you said, Dennis, it's a lot to look at. And it just, it's important as a school board member, when that's one of our biggest jobs. I think we've really got to keep a close eye and look through every possible line to make sure nothing's getting through the cracks.
Send any comments?
I have two things. Do, do we still have a policy committee? Our, our committees haven't been active this year. Do we know who's on them? I don't remember.
I think I'm one of those.
Randy and me.
Okay, so.
Excellent suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's traditionally what would happen, is that the policy committee would do that, would go through and ask the questions, and then report back, so.
Sounds, sounds good to me, you know.
You all willing to do that?
I'm on board.
And then the, the other thing is, to Dennis's point about, you know, how did we get here, you know, what sort of the context for some of this stuff? I, I think it's really helpful to read the legislative updates throughout the year, because then you know what legislation they're talking about in Richmond, and whether you agree with it or not. You know, you know what passed, and it's really helpful. And some of these do have the code section in, and the precedent in, and all of that, but, but some of them are brand new. So, so doing, looking at the legislative updates really helps.
So what's the view of the board? You want to table six-two?
No, I think my feeling of these, the one that I have particular concern with is one we're going to relook. So if that's dropped out.
Is that KLB?
Yeah. I, I'm ready to vote on the package as it's been.
Yeah, CLA is, is nothing that we can really change, because that was pulled straight from code. Dr. Heingartner gave that to me. I, you know, I think that was something that I felt that needed to be expressed publicly, that that is in our code. If you have any, you know, inkling to write to a, to, to one of your representatives, because they're going to be around at some point and ask for either a check or a vote, let them know that you're upset with this, because I'm not real happy with it. But at another session, we should probably discuss shoring that up, or I would like to, you know, but this is, as it stands, is fine, with the exception of removing.
So do I, do you have a motion to approve the policy except KLB that Dr. Heingartner suggested?
Sir, move.
Motion made by Mr. Gutschall. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. Any other further discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gutschall?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Helsley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and the policy committee, hopefully you will report back in August. Okay, moving on to superintendent reports. Ms. Shepherd, do you have any comments about?
So the monthly reports are there, but I would like to talk about the public comment that Mr. Street made earlier about the track at Mountain View High School. I received a note from our interim supervisor for maintenance that Mountain View High School, they plan to start the work Monday or Tuesday next week. But, Mr. Street, I hope you noticed that Honey Run Elementary School's track was paved. It was center previously, but we paved it this summer, so I hope you did notice that.
Okay, thank you for, any other questions about monthly reports? I think attendance?
Nothing to look at, isn't it?
The lights won't be on. I think the Southern Campus led the accounting, if I remember correctly.
That is correct.
Right now, everybody's absolutely.
We got perfect attendance, right?
All right. Do, let's see. No, we don't want to vote on that, do we? I shouldn't do that. Okay, number eight, board comment. Board member comments. Who wants to start?
I'll do it. I don't know if anybody else had the opportunity, but Marty and I went to Central the other day to see the middle school, summer school projects. They did it at Central, because they were doing some work at Peter Mullenberg, and it was really impressive to see all the kids in their projects. Some of the kids were more willing to do a presentation. Some of them were very shy. There are four girls, rising sixth graders, that are going to change the world that were there. I don't know if you talked to them. They were the last ones around the circle. It was amazing. But I really, I appreciate all the hard work by the staff, the two teachers that planned it, and then everybody who was there to help, so. That was it.
Dennis, comments?
Yeah, some of you are aware that there is a YMCA task force in, in Shenandoah County. And the idea is that we can hopefully leverage a YMCA system of programs that would come here that would eventually give rise to a YMCA center, like the thirty-five million dollar center they have in Stanton, and under whose rubric we would operate, not we as a school board, but we as a county would operate these programs. The leadership for this task force asked our superintendent and asked Andrew to participate early on, and, and the task force was greatly encouraged by, by the willingness of our leadership to, to actually participate in this. I've been asked to chair one of, one of the groups that has to do with naming potential programs that we would like to see begun. YMCA programs that we'd like to be, see begun in various places in the county. The idea is to have them in various locations, not just in Woodstock, but in Newmarket, in Quicksburg, in Toms Brook, you know, in, in various centers. So we'll be taking a look at that. But the idea is to create programs that will enhance, if you will, the, the, the quality of life in, in the county such that it, and, and, and the, the key concept in this program, I believe, is to, is to have something to counter the, the negative mental health aspects that we've been talking about tonight and that we've seen. And so one aspect is what the school system itself is doing, which is developing a more structured way of, of attacking mental health issues. The flip side of that, I think, which is this is trying to target, is to create a positive lifestyle, if you will, that would obviate people doing, you know, just sitting on social media and, and, and feeling sorry for themselves and not getting out and, and, and having a healthy exchange with others. And so I'm delighted that in, in this, this subcommittee, that Dr. Heingartner is going to take part. We're going to have Valley Health take part. We're going to have Parks and Recreation with Jared Hoover take part, and Chamber of Commerce with Sharon Berencelli. And those four people are very, very talented, very cooperative people. And I'm, what I like is, I think those groups are going to try to find a way to kind of leave their institutional egos at the door and kind of work on things that will be win-win-win. And so the reason I'm asking you this is that we're doing this resource unconstrained. So we come up with some programs that sound good, we'll find people, at least I'm told, who will actually fund these programs. And we're not talking about a school program here. We're talking about a Shenandoah County writ large and having people support it. And this can really help our school system, because it can include things like aquatics, and it can, performance areas, and athletics, and teams, and stuff like that. So as we meet, we're going to try to be creative about some of these programs that might be created. So I'm finally getting to the bottom line here. If you, I, I know that Dave and within the group, you'll be asking, you'll be working with the, 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 the school system itself, and I'm asking the school board members if there are programs or activities you think would be particular, in a particular area, or just a particular activity that we can engage in that would be, and this is one of those times we can think resource unconstrained. It's like a kid with a Christmas list, right? So if there are, or, or if you've had any ideas about something like that, it could be in the field of agriculture, athletics, or. or, you know, whatever. I mean, imagination, it does no bounds here. If you feed that information to us, we'll put it in that, in the hopper with that group and feed it up to the task force itself for adjudication and maybe, maybe implementation. So it, it sounds exciting to me and I welcome any of your ideas to help it, make it, make it go.
Are you all talking with the Stanton folks on some of the programming they do?
Everything.
Okay.
But, but, but it's, it's, we would be doing this under the rubric of the Stanton Augusta YMCA. However, the program should be done here, managed here.
Right.
And, and, and we'd grow them here. So it has to have its own Shenandoah flavor.
Right, right, yeah. We tried to do it five years ago.
Yeah.
And it, and it just sort of ran out of steam. But they were, they were so incredibly helpful, the Stanton folks, and they had a great idea for programming for something that supplemented. Summer School, I remember, was one of the great programs. Something that offered activities for kids during extended school breaks, you know, like the two weeks at Christmas time, some parents still have to work. And, you know, they, they had some good ideas for those things.
Dave had some, I mean, Dave's perfectly positioned because he, he did this two, three years ago and, and, and has a lot of great ideas already. So I, I think we're, we do have a lot of background that we'll be able to feed right into this.
Good.
So, okay, anyway, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, comment?
Yes, just thinking about those that we've lost that were recognized at the beginning of the meeting. Tough pill to swallow for really all three of them. And it's just a great example of three great educators who are impossible to replace.
Randy? All right, I, I got a few. And Kyle, I appreciate that. I've talked to two of them. I spoke at Donna's memorial service yesterday. And I think she was in my first class at Central High School. We had the eighth graders up there. And I couldn't get, get her out of my room when I wasn't teaching, whatever. But, and then Seth, that was about thirty years after that. I mean, it's, it's tough to lose great people. And it's tough to replace them. But thank you, Kyle, for doing that. I got my list all over the place. The last meeting was tough. But I received numerous notes, letters, and emails that touched me. And I'm not going to go into many of them, but I want to highlight one that was from a former superintendent. And I worked under him and when he came, he realized I served on the board of supervisors for, for four years. And probably that the most crucial vote on that board at that time was the funds for the county park. And I forgot, but he remembered I told him this. And at that time, I forget, seventy-nine to eighty-three is when I served. The state would came up, would give us seventy-five percent of the funds and we would have to come up with twenty-five percent. And back then, recreation wasn't that important. And I voted for the county park and look at it today. But the voters voted me out at the next election. With the name change issue, the notes were just touching. So hopefully we can move on from that and, and I know I will do my best to move on. So, anyway. Okay, changing gears. I ran into an outstanding student that went through our school system that went to Triplet Tech. And he has been an electrician for eighteen years with his company in Northern Virginia. His family lives here and he earns forty-five dollars an hour. He didn't go to college, but he loves his vocation and it is rewarding for him. And as Cindy said about the summer school program, I, I was amazed when I took time and met with those students last Friday. And I walked around and asked him, what was the most, what did you enjoy the most? And many of them told me touring Shenandoah Caverns that's in our backyard. Never had the chance touring one of our resources we have in our backyard. Okay, on, I don't know, registration for students' New Year. I had, had a complaint, it, it, it's ten pages long. I mean, I, I, of course, I didn't register anybody. But, and a family of four, they had to go through that process. I don't know. We may need to look at that. I don't know who's in charge of that, Ms. Shepherd. And on another note, we, we highlighted our superintendent. They appointed a interim superintendent at Frederick County with Cindy, Michelle, and Andrew and I know well, that was David Martin. He was the catalyst to steer us to get Ms. Shepherd. So I wished him well. As a matter of fact, they had breakfast with him last week. So I know he'll do well down there for six months. And then finally, I, I always mention, I looked at the Delta News Record. And on the front page, one day this week, it was about children books that an elementary teacher wrote in Rockham County. And I hope that our, I don't know who's in charge of ordering books, elementary books. Listen to the, the one that she has published, The Day That the Farmers Quit. Of course, you know why I love that. I need to read that. But her second book, and this, this is amazing, The Day That the Teachers Quit. Illustration book, I would say for second grade. I don't know, I haven't seen them. But I'll give you the article. You can read about it, so. Anyway. So that's all I have, probably too much. And I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight-fifty. You have a good evening. Oh, gavel. Where is it? Thank you, Kyle.